Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk call the roll, please, so that we might establish, hopefully establish, a quorum with the existing members? Go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby? Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Shanier?
Here.
Councilmember Geta?
Here.
Councilmember Jennings?
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Here. We do have a quorum. And of course, tonight is a very special occasion. The swearing in of three new council members. The swearing in for another term for our council member Eric Geta. And yes, in a minor thing, the swearing in of the mayor for the second term. And so the way we are going to proceed tonight is we are going to swear in the new members. And we are going to swear them in consecutively two, four, six, and eight. And then I will be sworn in. And then we will ask each of the new members to make some opening remarks. And then we'll ask the other council members if they want to make some remarks. And then we will have a very short meeting. I just want to say at the very beginning what a proud and special occasion this is for our city, especially to welcome new members to the dais. And as I said to you individually, I only wish for you that you were able to gather together with your families and your supporters and your friends in the chambers. But why don't we say this? That once we are past this terrible period, this COVID time, that maybe we'll do it over again so that you can have your family and your friends and your supporters and gather in the right way, no matter what the circumstances. This is still a very, very special, special occasion. And an experience that you will not, nor should you ever forget because it means a lot when you are elected to public office and especially when you are elected to the city council for the first time. I'll save the rest of my comments for later, but I just wanted to get us off to a great start and say what an incredibly exciting evening this is as we point towards the future of the city we all love. Without further ado, why don't we begin, Madam Clerk, with District Two and Councilmember-elect Sean LaLolli?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes?
Would you like to do the Pledge of Allegiance first?
I knew that I was going to forget something and Rick Jennings is always the one to remind me. So thank you. In fact, Councilmember Jennings, why don't you do us the honors, please? If you can stand, please do. We always start our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all. Thank you, Councilmember Jennings, for helping me as you always do. Now we begin with Councilmember-elect Sean LaLolli. And Madam Clerk, who is going to swear in the council member-elect?
I get the honor of swearing in the council member tonight.
Okay. Please proceed.
Thank you. So I, Sean LaLolli. Let's unmute.
Sean, you're on mute. We all are patient with each other. Go ahead.
The next council member is to unmute.
I, Sean LaLolli.
I, Sean LaLolli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, council member.
You can take that elect title off of your Zoom and congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have you share some words in a few minutes, but let us now move to District Four and Councilmember-elect Katie Valenzuela. Welcome. And who's going to swear you in, Councilmember-elect Valenzuela?
My mom, Lisa Valenzuela.
What a great, what a great honor, Ms. Valenzuela.
Yes, it is.
Take it away. Take it away.
I, Katie Valenzuela.
I, Katie Valenzuela.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. Good job, Mom.
Good job, Mom. That is wonderful and that is official. Let us now move to the swearing in, not for the first time, of the District Six council member, Councilmember Eric Geta. Sworn in by his wife.
Yes.
Christina, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Eric Geta.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Geta. Another term. Congratulations to you. We will hear from you in a moment. Let us now turn to District Eight where we celebrate the swearing in of Councilmember-elect Mai Vang. And Mai, who is going to swear you in?
My incredible high school teacher, Ms. Jean Crowder.
Ms. Crowder.
Hello. I am having difficulty with my video.
We can see you. You're on.
Okay, excellent.
See you, Ms. Crowder.
Hey, sweetheart.
Hi.
Are you ready?
I am.
I, Mai Vang.
I, Mai Vang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which we are about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember Vang.
Congratulations, Councilmember Vang. That's, again, wonderful. Now we will move to the swearing in of the mayor. And I have my wife of 29 years, Julie Steinberg, who's going to swear me in. Let's see if we, do we sit or do we stand? Here we go. Okay.
I, Daryl Steinberg.
I, Daryl Steinberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter. Thank you. Thank you. I am going to switch computers for 30 seconds and we will be back in 30 seconds. Hold on. All right. Hold on. All right. Congratulations to everyone. And I think it is a really nice and important tradition that we give each of the members the opportunity to thank whoever they want and to express their thoughts on this really incredible day. And there are no time limits, except, you know, it's always better to be brief. But this is your night. And so I'd like to begin with Councilmember LaLolli and give you the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank the man upstairs. Without his guidelines and paving the path, this would have never been possible. I also want to thank my wonderful mother, who is, unfortunately, she's not up here. I'm pretty sure she's watching us and probably screaming right now as she's looking at the screen. So I want to thank her. I want to thank my brother and my sister for being so supportive. I also want to thank my wonderful wife and my son, Pasha, and my daughter, Isla, for being very supportive during this campaign. In fact, my son played a very important role on my election as he walked with me and knocked on some of the doors that I couldn't get to. And he did a pretty good job representing his dad. So I'm hoping I won't, I definitely will not let him down. You know, to win an election like this, it was really a group effort. And I want to, there are certain individuals that I definitely want to thank. I want to thank Micah Grant, Giovanna Guy, Alisa Santano, and Andrew Acosta for their advice and their consulting on how to develop a thick skin during the race and how to kind of not give up. And, you know, telling me regardless of the temperature, the air quality, you have to be out there and knocking on doors. And I did listen to them, so I want to thank them. I want to thank all the residents of District Two. In particular, I want to thank Jane McCauley, Sandra Beckencourt, my wonderful friend and Torn Rivers School trustee, Christine Jefferson, her wonderful husband, Greg Jefferson, my dear friend Sandy Shidi, and Sister Pat and Pastor Ben, all the associations within District Two, all the residents within District Two, every individual that took their time and voted during this important election. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I'm also very humbled and also honored to be joining my colleagues within the City Hall and working with them and learning from their leadership on how to continue making our city the great city that it is and to make sure that we can set Sacramento as an example of what a compassionate and giving city is supposed to be. So we have to, you know, hopefully we'll stop going and visiting other cities to pick up information and we'll make other cities come and visit us. Again, I hope that I didn't forget anyone in particular. Oh, my goodness, I did. I want to make sure I thank Mr. Cyrus Yusefi and Mr. Golshani for being so supportive of my campaign. And it's also an honor to be the first Iranian-American to be on the council of the city of Sacramento. So it's definitely an honor to hold that title as well. And I also want to thank three more people, and that's my very good friend, Dr. Derek LaHome, and my wonderful friends, Paramis and Kevin Frills. So thank you so much. And as I said, it's truly an honor to be in this setting and it's such a humbling feeling and ready to roll up the sleeves and get out there and make sure that we work, we be transparent, and make sure I do a great job representing the residents of District Two. So thank you very much for the honor.
Congratulations again in great words. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Katie Valenzuela, welcome again and the floor is yours.
Thank you. It's been nine long months waiting for this night. I'm really glad that it's finally here. I'm really glad my mom was able to zoom in from Bakersfield as well because my campaign was a true family affair from the first fundraiser when my niece Isabella was DJ in someone's backyard in Land Park to that last weekend when my mom was out canvassing saying, "Are you going to vote for my daughter?" And people were like, "I guess I have to." I've never had a mom canvas before. I know, you know, my siblings and my mom who were there with me in those last few days. And of course, we were missing my dad, who passed in 2012. And I know he was with us then, just like I know he's with us tonight. And just so many people I'm grateful for, from family and friends to volunteers to supporters. I know I couldn't possibly do it justice if I tried to name each of you specifically. And so I won't. But I will just say that my election was really a part of a movement that started before me and a movement that will go on after me. And to all of the activists and organizers and troublemakers, good trouble, that are out there still doing the work today, you know, my victory is a big thanks to you and the work that you've done. And I know that this feels like it's been a long road to get here, but it's also just the beginning. And I'm really excited for what we can do together. I'm excited to finally get a chance to represent the amazing residents of District Four. And I'm really just looking forward to getting to work and seeing what we can get done and how we can make Sacramento a city for all of us. So thank you, Mayor, for the time. And thank you, District Four residents, for putting your faith in me. I won't let you down.
I know you won't. Congratulations again to you. Everyone is clapping even though you can't, even though you can't hear it necessarily. Wonderful. Let me now turn it over to our returning colleague. But reelection is sweet. Councilmember Eric Geta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity here. Want to first right off the bat, thank my beautiful wife and for swearing me in for all her support and love. And of course, my son Javier for all his motivation and energy. Every time I feel I'm getting tired or whatnot, he really pumps that up. So definitely want to thank my family for all their support and my siblings and mother as well, who are all in the District Two, all these six constituents. So then I also want to thank all our constituents of District Six for their confidence for these past three elections, including this one this year, and all the neighborhood leaders who give so much of their time in collaboration with our office to work with our community, for the betterment of our community. I want to thank you guys for the tireless nights, evenings, weekends you guys take away from all your family to work together. And I want to also thank all of the District Six team over the past years here who have come in from our interns at both the high school, the college level, and Pope's baccalaureate level as well for the past six years. All the staff that have come in and worked as district reps and now gone and moved on to more exciting things, going to law school, achieving different things, you know, working in the mayor's office. It's a, this swearing in today is a testament to all of the work all of you have done for our community. I could not be here without everyone's collective work. And finally, I just want to also send a congratulatory welcome to my new colleagues. You know, congratulations, Councilmember Valenzuela, Councilmember Vang, and Councilmember LaLolli on this. And another strong reelection for our good mayor, Mayor Daryl Steinberg, you know, from, originally hailing from District Six. It's exciting. We got more work ahead and looking forward to working together. Let's go Sacramento. Vamos Sacramento.
Thanks so much, Councilmember Geta. Welcome back. Now, let us hear from Councilmember Mai Vang representing the proud District Eight, South Sacramento. Big night. Welcome to you.
Awesome. Thanks, Mayor. First, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you and thank all my colleagues. I really look forward to working with each and every one of you. And first, I want to take this opportunity to thank all our amazing volunteers, supporters, and residents in South Sacramento who have been by my side since the beginning. It is truly your heart and hustle that got us here today. And when we started this campaign and this hard and hustle movement, you know, I said that I would bring all of you with me and I meant every word, right? That this seat is really your seat and that this historical win as the first Hmong and Asian-American woman really belongs to all of you. As a child of Hmong refugees and the oldest of 16 children, I am always reminded that I am truly the embodiment of my ancestors' wildest dreams. If anyone was to tell fourth grade Mai that one day, you know, she would be making history tonight, I don't think she would believe it. And I know in Sacramento, that is absolutely possible. I also know that I stand on the shoulder of many who came before me, those who've made sacrifices, our elders, and all the incredible, amazing women that have paved the way so that, you know, Katie and I and Councilwoman Ashby could be here today. And so thank you to all the trailblazers out there. Also, you know, when I think about the swearing in ceremony, I don't think any of us last winter would have anticipated that we would be in a global pandemic today. And so, you know, today's swearing in is a little bit bittersweet as it is occurring in the midst of a pandemic that has hurt so many of, so many folks in our community, right? And I know that all of us, Mayor, and all my colleagues, we have significant challenges in front of us. And, but I know that we, together, we could be able to address some of the toughest problems in the city. To the residents and voters of District Eight, you have my commitment to always work hard on your behalf and that I will never, never, ever forget where I come from. And then you have my promise every day to work hard and that you will have someone at City Hall fighting for you and our neighborhoods at City Hall. Lastly, I wanted to share, you know, this evening, I had my teacher, Ms. Jean Crowder, swear me in. And Ms. Crowder is very special to me because it's folks like her that has helped me. You know, if I didn't have Ms. Crowders in my life, I wouldn't be here today. I share the story that as a high school student, she worked with me every Tuesday and Thursday night as a senior until 11:00 a.m. and drove me home. She made sure that I completed my scholarship and college applications, right? And I'm just so grateful to her and so many folks like her because I truly believe we have so many Ms. Crowders in Sacramento today making a difference in people's lives. Our teachers, our neighborhood leaders, our nonprofit community leaders, local minority-owned businesses, to all of our essential workers at the city doing their part every day to uplift young people in our communities. And so I want to just give a shout out to all our city staff and everyone out there that's on the front line doing this work every day, right? We are elected officials, but we can't get anything done without the people. And so, you know, I definitely want to dedicate this swearing in to them. And I know that together, all of you, if you're watching this right now, you will continue to be my eyes and ears on the ground, fighting alongside me. And I know that together, we could build a collective future where everyone is included. I also just want to take this moment just to say a few words in Hmong, Mayor, if that's okay.
Of course, please.
So, niang jong i chong net si. Kiti ning cha kung i shara mona yao im hoy. Jong shia hen bi dia. Bei dao itun tai mong e yoa. Watao oi itu city council member niang ho Sacramento. Ku sa wa o chara ni chwoleng chwotu. Tau bei kei pe lu campi. Kung i po de bei shara ying shi shaw hen. Ni yin yo, ni shara ying pa san ya. Pa hu so tong, pa ko ko tong. Ni yav yin eto kei lu. Kia pa tanga bei ti li ying lu campi no. Ku sa wa chara ni chwoleng chwotu na. Kia ku sa wa chara kung ya. Kia ku ci, ku ya ci ku po. Ku jia onko se anti ni shara chwoleng chwotu. Ya v yin eto kei lu e, you know, mona is possible. And so ku sa wa chara ni chwoleng chwotu na. Chi ta lin da, you know, ku sa. Kei ro ni shara, ni shara hai ti. Ku gi yonai itun tai mong. Kia ku sa kei ro ni hai ti. You know, zi ta ku jing jing yau na. Lo so niang no ku to po hai ti bei mong jing jong yeh hen. E ku lu bei mong hen na. Ku sa kei ro ni chwoleng chwotu pa hai ti. Ku yu niang no. Ya ni sa ta ta kei pa. Ko ni so, so worry ya. Ko ni ku ta ku ta chi no. Ku mo ku so tong no ni. Kia, chi ni ni shi ta niang ho Facebook. Ku so tong ya. Blau yi chi, tau yi sun. Blau yi yi na, ko na ku so tong. Ya ni mo, ni ni ta kei pa. Ra chi ta ko ni, a chi ku ku na, okay? Chi ta lin da, ku sa hai ro bei mong chwoleng chwotu hai ti. You know, as itu community organizer, ku to po hai ti tau bei mong ma shia. Ku to po hai ti. Ku ging po le hai ni ma shia tau bei mong ti. E ku sa hai ti tau. Bei po le hai ni ma shia ko bei shara ju. Japai lu shua ti pa chur chwoleng chwotu ya. So when other communities are hurting, we all hurt too, right? And we have to make sure that we protect and lift everyone, right? Na yao ko ku kei sa, ku sa ti yao bei. You know, follow this path. Bei chur chwoleng chwotu. Chi ya mong su, la hai ni la bei. This is how bei shara yoa ba ming na. E ku sa hai chalun le ro ni chwoleng chwotu ti. E wu cha na. Ku sa give a shout out to Grandpa Charlie. Ku tu mong campaign chair. Ku sa hai ro nu hai ti. Wu cha ro ko ta kei lu. Kia pa chur ku. Ke yao bei itu mong elders. E po ping su, bei chun tai mong. E ku sa wu cha ro ko na. E ku hai li na su. E wu cha ro ni chwoleng chwotu. Again, ku so tong ya blau yi chi, tau yi sun. Blau yi yi. Ya mo ra chi ni sa questions, issues niang ho Sacramento. Ni a chi ku ku na. E ku hai li na su. Wu cha na cho ne chwoleng chwotu. yong ho Sacramento, ne a chi ku ku na, e ku hai li na su, e o cha na, to len to tu. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mai. That was powerful. All of your comments were powerful. And we have a tremendous opportunity together. I guess I'll make a few comments and try to keep them short. For me, this is the ninth time I've been sworn into public office, and this is Sacramento. And I know that the first time, especially for new offices, is most special. But it never gets old. And it is always, it is always meaningful because to be able to serve in public office is a rare opportunity and a rare responsibility. I want to thank my family. I want to thank Julie for swearing me in in the middle of her workday. So that was very, very special. I want to thank my entire family, my kids, and parents and brothers, and everybody who I love. I want to thank my personal staff for working so hard over these past four years to achieve a lot of progress and with the recognition that we still have a long, long way to go. I want to thank my city council colleagues who are returning for your dedication and public service. I want to thank the city staff. I want to thank the city manager, Howard Chan, and his entire team and organization, the other charter officers, the city attorney, Suzanne Alcala, Mindy Capi, our clerk, and John Colver, our treasurer, and LaShel Dozier, our executive director of the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, and all of the people who help lead our city. We are a team. And I want to thank especially, and it may be easy to forget, but always important to never forget, mostly, I want to thank the people of Sacramento for returning me to this high office. I know every day that I am here that these are not our offices. These are not our seats. These are the people's seats. And we are temporary stewards of those seats to do the very best that we can in the time that we have to try to make the lives of the people. We represent all the people, but especially the people who need help to make their lives better. I certainly want to extend again my happiest and heartiest congratulations to all of the new members, to Sean, to Katie, to Mai, and to Eric. You are all barrier breakers in your own right. You're all barrier breakers in your own right. And I get asked a lot about, well, the new council, the new council, different, everybody's got different politics, people have different points of view on the issues. I am really excited about this city council because I think you are all going to bring a tremendous amount of new energy combined with the existing energy, which is also palatable and great. And I'm very excited about what we can do together. For the new members, this is your night. The night, the night for your families and the night for you. My night, frankly, was four years ago when I was sworn in for the first time as mayor. So I'm not going to lay out some second-term agenda. I'll leave that for the state of the city. But I do want to make a comment before I close on the challenges we face, but the environment, especially the political environment, not just in our community, but in our country that we all face, and how we might show the way for others. Yesterday, I was privileged to be one of the fifty-five presidential electors at the state capitol. And I met up with an old friend, David Kennedy, who is an esteemed historian, who's written a number of biographies on the presidency. And I asked him about his feeling about the future of the country, knowing that he is an optimist. And he said, I suppose not surprisingly, that he's very worried that there is a fundamental lack of trust in all institutions, not just government institutions, but many of our private sector and community institutions, that people don't trust each other anymore and that that societal bond of disagreeing but caring for each other has broken down. And then I read this essay that former Secretary of State George Shultz wrote upon the commemoration of his hundredth birthday, where he wrote about his reflections on life. And he said, "Trust is the coin of the realm. When trust was in the room in his career, whatever room that was, good things happened. When trust was not in the room, good things did not happen. Everything else is details." He said, "Often in my career, I saw that genuine empathy is essential in establishing solid, trusting relationships." So I think about us in the city of Sacramento and the fact that some of us, all of us, depending upon our districts, depending upon our philosophies, depending upon our life experiences, come to this job and come to this role rightfully fighting for what we believe in. And that's the way that it should be, and that's the way that it must be. At the same time, I am confident and I know that we can also act always like a city family, where we are always looking out for each other in coming to the difficult decisions that we have to make to address some of the challenges, whether it's the continuation of COVID-19 or the affordable housing and homeless crisis or safety, public safety, however we define it. And that now more than ever, it is essential that we remember those words that I just read, that the trust we establish with each other and with our community is paramount. And that if we maintain it and if we continue to gain the trust of the people that we represent and each other, there is absolutely nothing that stands in our way of achieving everything you as individuals want to achieve and everything we want to achieve as a city. So I just wanted to share my thoughts from my heart here today, that we are living in a terribly polarized country and a polarized political environment. And fighting for our beliefs and our values is paramount. We can do it in a way that, where we are all working together at the same time. And so, I can't wait to get started. And I'd like to turn it over to the other members of the city council who were not elected this term, but want to welcome their new colleagues. Let me start with Mayor Pro Tem Angelique Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations to you, Mayor, and to Councilmember Gera for your successful reelections. And Councilmember Loloey, welcome to the dais. When we're not in COVID times, we will get to sit together, and that will be some fun. But obviously, I am really excited tonight to welcome Councilwoman Katie Valenzuela and Councilwoman Mai Vang to the dais because it is especially fun for me to see the two of you join us on this body. I've been by myself in that regard since 2014. When Bonnie Pennell left, it wasn't like that when I got here. When I got here, Lauren Hammond was still here, Bonnie was here, and Sandy was here. And just one by one, they left. So ladies, I am particularly excited to see you in your seats tonight. And Katie, it was fun to watch your mom swear you in. It really reminded me of where I was. I was actually the same age as both of you are now when I was sworn in too. So it's pretty nostalgic for me to watch you both. And I guess my advice to all of you, but particularly the three new people, is that being on the council is really an opportunity. It'll be whatever you make of it. One of my very first chief of staff used to say, "It's like string. It's as long as you want it to be. You can keep going and going and going." Or you can, you know, focus on a small section of things. But you should really have an honest conversation with yourself about what you'd like to achieve. Write it down somewhere in a journal, keep track of it, and focus always on that goal. My dad asked me right after I won, "What is it you want to achieve?" And I told him, "What I really want, Dad, is for people to be grateful that they get to live here, that they wake up in the morning and they go, 'How great is this? This is where I get to be.'" And anything I can do in my time on this body to contribute to that quality of life for people in the city is what I want to do. So set yourselves some goals like that. You have all already proven yourselves to be very brave, risk takers. Don't let that stop here. Don't be afraid to continue to take risks and be brave and step out of your own comfort zone to try things on this dais and reach out, you know, to each other and to us. And just, you know, remember to have fun while you're at it too. It'll go by so fast, and you will all do a great job. And this will become your little dysfunctional family, just like it is for us right now. So welcome to that, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ashby. I forgot to mention, and he deserves mention, my thank you is Correa Seguera, our city auditor, who is also a charter officer and a very important part of our team. So thank you. Let me now turn it over to Vice Mayor Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to welcome my new colleagues. You know, this makes this a very diverse council, which I think particularly at this time in history is really imperative and a great thing. It's nice to have a good gender mix, an ethnic mix, and just the points of view that are brought to this council, I think, are going to really be great. The mayor and I were speaking earlier today, and we both agreed that there had been kind of a lethargy on the council. And I think that you all are going to break that pretty clearly. And we welcome your energy and your ideas. So having been in the seat for the last six years, I just have a little bit of advice, which is that as a council, we always have to be mindful that we represent our constituents. We serve at their pleasure. And we try to do the greatest good for the greatest number of people. I'm sure you're fully aware of that. But it takes a certain amount of collaboration to get there. On any particular thing that you would like to get across the finish line, you're going to have to work with other council members and create a synergy, if you will. You know, there's a lot of helping hands here, and don't be afraid to use them. You all have my cell phone, and you're welcome to call me anytime, except never break the Brown Act. So always be mindful of that. It's very important. I see the city attorney is laughing. But it is something to be aware of. But this is a great group. We have been a very functional council the whole time that I've been aboard. And I think that we have achieved some really great work coming out of the Great Recession and moving into this pandemic. This council has been resilient, and I think that we've supported each other quite well. And as Angelique said, you know, at times that means doing battle and disagreeing. But the bottom line is, I think we've stuck together pretty well. So we have a great city. We have a lot of work to do. You are very much welcome, and I look forward to working with you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you so much. Councilmember Jay Sheneer. Oh, you're on mute.
Yeah, yeah, I'm getting there. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Just want to add my congratulations. I know that the three of you each worked incredibly hard, excuse me, to get to where you are today. And the reward is, is you don't have Tuesday nights to yourself for the next four years. But I just want to say I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Any way that I can be helpful, that my staff can be helpful, we want to be there for you. We have, I think, some of the largest challenges we've had, certainly since I've been on the council for the last ten years, particularly around the homeless issue and how we treat our young people and some others. And I know those are issues that are incredibly important to you. I think the only way that we're successful in those things is if we work together. And so, I really look forward to that. I looked forward to the boost of energy that I know you all will bring and hopefully challenging yourselves and all of us to do better every day. And so, again, just my congratulations. So look forward to getting to know you much better. We've had some conversations, but again, I want to offer myself and my staff any way we can be helpful, just to make you successful. Because if you're successful, we're all successful. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilmember Rick Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations to you on another term, Mayor, and to Councilmember Getta. We are glad to have you back. And also, congratulations to our three new colleagues who are taking District Two, District Eight, and District Four. And we look forward to working with you. I too want to join my colleagues in saying that we're only as good as the weakest link of our team. And we are a team. What we achieve, we achieve as a team. And this is a new team, which will require us to take time to really get to know each other and to make sure that we understand the values that each person brings to the table and the ideas that they have to move this city forward. I want to make sure that we all are willing to listen and learn from each other and don't come in with just my idea or bust. And I know that we will, because you guys have worked hard to get here, and this is not your first rodeo. It might be the first time on the council, but this is not your first rodeo. So I think what I want to say is that I look forward, we look forward, this whole team, not just the council, but all the different departments and all the different employees for the city of Sacramento, look forward to working together with you to make this the city that we all want it to be. The door is open. Whatever you need, whatever support you need, whatever help you need, you will not get it if you don't ask. My mama used to say, "Closed mouth don't get fit." So please, make sure you open your mouth, come knock on the door. Let's sit down from time to time. We're going to make sure that we socially distance, because I'm an old man like Jeff. So we're in that range where we got to make sure we keep ourselves safe so we can be here for a while longer. But we're going to do everything we can to support you, to love you, and to help you to achieve all the desires of your heart, all your goals and your aspirations. That's our job, is to help you. And so, and your job is to help us to do the same, to achieve all the desires of our heart and make this city great. And so, I, we are looking forward to each one of you. And whatever happened before tonight, let's erase that and let's build a great future together going forward. Welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, or any of the other charter officers, LaShel, anybody want to say anything?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I too want to welcome the three new members of the council. I've had an opportunity to spend some time with each of them, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you to support you and to provide you whatever you need to help make you successful. And congratulations also to the mayor and Councilman Gera for your reelection. We look forward to continuing to work with you to do all the great things that are ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, of course.
I just really wanted to say, you know, congratulations to our new council members. It's very exciting to see all of the changes that are coming on board. And I really look forward to sitting down and having an opportunity to talk to you about a lot of the great work that this team of electeds have really been working very, very hard on for many years and are committed to moving forward. So with that, I just really want to say congratulations to you as well as to the mayor and Councilmember Gera for your reelection. And we look forward to really jumping in there with all of your energy.
And we look forward to really jumping in there with all of your energy and moving forward.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
Um, congratulations, Mayor and Councilmember Geta. I'm so happy that we get to continue to keep working together. And I appreciate it being able to connect with our new council members, talk to you. I already told my team, hang on to your hats, because it's going to be, it is going to be fast paced when we take off. I mean, this council is already, uh, really, really, uh, active and, uh, they keep us all on our toes. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, for reminding everybody about the Brown Act. So I appreciate that, but, uh, congratulations to all of you.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I just make a brief comment? I was going to take exception to something that Rick said, but actually, you know, it, uh, it reminds me that he and I are now the elders of the council. And I know that our younger members will always respect their elders. But in fact, Rick is three months older than myself, so he takes the prize and, uh, I respect him a lot.
Age is just a number. Very good. That is true. Uh, Councilmember Luloli had, uh, an additional comment. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor, and, um, my apologies. Uh, you would think by this age and the experience I've had that, that the butterfly and the nerves will not come into a picture, uh, by this time. But, um, there is, uh, one other person that I really have to thank, and that is my late father who passed away two years ago. Um, he would have been extremely excited and proud, uh, considering the basis of moving forward, high integrity, high morals was something that he always taught us at home. And, um, I know that he's, uh, watching down right now and, uh, he has a big smile on. And, uh, there's no doubt in my mind that he has a sense of, uh, pride that he's never felt before. So, uh, thank you so much for, um, letting me bring that back on. As I said, um, I think, um, I got a little bit of butterflies as if it's my freshman year in high school. And, uh, who am I going to meet? But just to kind of ca- uh, add to, uh, Mr. Uh, Councilmember Jennings is that, um, I do agree. I think whatever it was before the election, it's all water under the bridge. Now we're one team united and we have to have the same common goal. And that's how to make our city better and how to fight some of the issues that are affecting, uh, some of our citizens. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me, uh, to have that few minutes.
Of course. Thank you. But butterflies are normal here, by the way. So, members, um, we have a very short agenda. And I think the new members know this, but just to, to tell you that at the, of course, you speak on every item, but in the end you have the opportunity to give comments for items not on the agenda, any new ideas or, uh, requests for reports back or action. And so, uh, just so you know that, um, you know, the, 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 the meeting is yours and it's the public's as well. Uh, but you have full opportunity to weigh in on, uh, on anything and everything. But right now, why don't we go to the consent calendar? And of course, the way that that works is that if a member wants to have an item heard separately, um, or, or voted on separately, that is, uh, uh, completely appropriate. Because consent apply, implies that we're in agreement without, uh, the need for further debate. So are there any issues on the consent calendar that any member would like to either, uh, take off the calendar to be voted on or discussed separately?
Mayor Steinberg, for the record, we're going to withdraw item number nine and Councilmember Geta has comments on number three.
Okay, Councilmember Geta, well, nine is withdrawn without objection. Three, go ahead, Councilmember Geta.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, another congratulations to, uh, uh, our colleagues and, uh, and all their supporters and community members. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, uh, you know, thank the staff and yourself and, uh, for, uh, bringing this particular item number three to make sure that, uh, I know that, uh, many, we've all heard from many of our constituents about the need for rental assistance and also making sure that we have our additional, any resources we have, uh, uh, to help those with, who have food insecurity. And, uh, I'll keep my comments short to that point. I think this is, uh, you know, as, as the, the clock runs down to December 31st, trying to make sure that we meet those urgent needs of people who are, uh, at the, at the far edges right now because of COVID-19. It's critical. So with that, I want to move the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor, but I wanted to expressly thank, uh, all our city staff and also the, um, community providers who are moving quickly to make sure that we, uh, move these COVID dollars out into the community quickly, particularly for rental assistance.
Thank you, Eric. And I worked with the city manager, uh, and, uh, the county director Dozier on this item over the last couple of weeks. And these, these are the additional cares dollars that we have. It now puts us up to close to $5 million of cares investment in the, uh, rental assistance. But make no mistake about it, come January, we're going to have to find ways to put more resources into the rental system. Um, because, uh, as hard as we fight to get people off the streets, um, it's that much more important for, prevent people who are living in fragile, uh, living conditions from becoming homeless. And so this is a, a good down payment. It allows to get to well over a thousand people or families, but we have a lot more work to do here. Councilmember Sheneer?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I, I just want to note on item five, um, this is a million 300,000 for youth pop-ups through Sierra Health. We, we know our young people are so in need of safe places to be. We've had a horrible season around gang activity. And the more that we can do to make sure, uh, that there are successful, positive environments for, for our youth, the better off we are. So I just want to note that and thanks, Sierra Health, for their, uh, implementation of the program.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else on the consent calendar?
I'm happy to second the motion.
Okay. Uh, is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, I have 13 callers on the consent calendar.
Oh, all right. Well, welcome the public.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city manager. And congratulations to the members sworn in this evening. My name is Richard Dana and with the Center at Sierra Health Foundation. I'm calling tonight in favor of item number five, the youth pop-up program. Uh, I will be brief because we have some of our wonderful youth leaders calling in as well. But I want you to know that from February 2019 to February 2020, the pop-up program enjoyed over 540 pop-up events that were attended by over 42,000 attendees. Uh, it's hard to believe that we're hitting our two-year mark of a program that has been such a fantastic partnership between the city of Sacramento, Sierra Health Foundation and our community and youth leaders. During the pandemic, we have moved into a virtual platform and continue to provide an important source of social connection, resources and youth leadership development. Uh, it's more crucial now than ever with the pandemic that we continue these connection points and to actually have that framework set up for when we start to reopen and our youth have a place to be. I want to thank you in advance for your support for the pop-up program. I know many of you have attended both virtually and in person, and I appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Mercedes Torres. I am representing Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center, calling in support of the pop-up program, item number five. Uh, youth and community pop-ups will be important for young people during the recovery after COVID because it ensures a safe alcohol drug-free space where teens and children can have fun. Additionally, it reassures adults, uh, that they don't need to worry about what their kid is actually doing. Furthermore, it allows young adults to have connections in their communities, supplying them with future job opportunities and recommendations should they ever want to go into community-based work. Additionally, those who are low income do not need to worry about where they are going to get the money to pay for their child to have a fun time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, uh, when do I start?
You can start now.
Okay. Um, my name is Antonina Gomez Jr. I live in Council District Three. Um, and I believe having my mayor and city council commit to youth and community pop-ups makes me feel safe every day and night because I know the next morning I will have food on my table because of my youth program manager, Aaron Aradondo. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Um, I just want to say, wait, what am I supposed to say?
Please proceed.
I just want to say thank you, I Y T, for everything you've given me, all of these opportunities. Um, the, um, the hang, the hangouts are really good. I enjoy them a lot. Um, I really appreciate what you guys do for us. And I hope I can keep going with this I Y T and the journey. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. Sorry.
Go ahead and start when you're ready. You have two minutes to address the council. Do you have comments?
Sorry, uh, talk about I Y T, right?
Yes.
Oh, uh, I Y T is, uh, the virtual hangouts are pretty cool because we get to talk and hang out with our friends over, uh, the virus. And at the end, we usually do a raffle to see if we can win gift cards. And the food, uh, and it feels cool when they drop off some food too, because at least it, it shows that they care about us and if we're hungry or something. And, uh, and their packages, how about like, like giving us games? Uh, it's pretty cool too, because I got a free Uno from one of my mentors. That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Aaron. Um, I used to be a barbent, barback before the COVID crisis. And I'm working with a group of other restaurant workers right now. Um, unfortunately, my other colleagues weren't able to call in because of some issue with the queue, but, um, I can try to speak for them. I just want to say thank you first, uh, for putting the extensions to the COVID protections on the consent calendar. They're necessary and they're vital for our community. And so it is so wonderful that you're going to pass them. But I do want to urge you to do more to make sure workers actually know they have those protections. Because unless workers know they have those protections, really they don't matter. Because people can't, people can't use them if they don't know they have them. And, um, I will say that of all the restaurant workers I have talked to, all the people we've been trying to let know about these protections, since they've been passed, not a single restaurant worker has known they've had any of these protections uh, when they, when I first talked to them. Um, and a friend of mine, a friend of mine, um, it works, um, at a restaurant and is very involved with her union, is very active. And she did not know she had the protections until today. So thank you so much, but I just urge you to do more to make sure people know that they have these protections so they can actually protect our workers and our whole community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay. I love being a part, uh, hello, my name is Marnie Daniel. First, first and foremost, I am from Impact Sack. And one of the questions I chose, I love being part of the youth pop-ups because it's fun for me as a youth and to make friends. Also to collab with, it also helps me to become a leader and to show you that it's okay to help others and it's okay to be the best they can be. Plus programs like this helps us be better and helps for the future reference. And for the second question I also chose, continuing funding of youth and community pop-ups is important to me because I want to continue funding because what if we want to go on a group vacation or field trip and we have no funding? Then what or where or how could we plan it together as a unit? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, um, hi, my name is Carla Chambers. I work with Impact Sack. And first of all, I just wanted to thank you for, you know, supporting the pop-ups, et cetera, because they have done so much for me and many other teams. Like, for example, they just connect us to the community and not only the community, but to each other. And I think that's a really good thing that not everybody gets to have. So thank you for that. And one of the ways that they can connect people is just by making everybody feel like they have a place to belong. And, you know, doing that by pop-ups and having fun with each other and bonding, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Alex Goming and I'm a youth intern at the Mong Youth and Parents United. I am here to po- support the pop-up program, item number five. The youth and community pop-ups are important to us youth during this pandemic because it allows us to take, allows us to make connections with people through the virtual world during this time where we are isolated. The youth and community pop-up is important during the recovery of the pandemic to youth because it gives us a highlight of our lifetime that we will remember forever. During my time here, I had expanded my horizon so much in many different ways. And this was such an extravagant experience to us all. Us youth are the ones who will make a difference in the future. And these type of youth pop-up program is what encourages us to make a difference. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Jeff Rossetto and I am a youth intern at Mong Youth and Parents United Youth Pop-Up Programs. I am calling to support pop-up program, item number five. Youth and community pop-ups are important to our community during the COVID pandemic because it gives the opportunity for the youth to come out a different perspective from the pandemic. And it's a place and event that brings you together and be entertained through games and win prizes. Youth and community pop-ups will be important for young people during the recovery after COVID because it gives them more stress free from school and other stuff going around in their life. And these pop-ups bring me hope that there will always be better days and better times to look forward to. As a young person in Sacramento, I want you to know that young people need youth and community pop-ups because they can impact not just their lives, but also impact other youth's lives. But also to get a learning factor and reflection out of, out of after the pandemic is over. Thank you for your time, Sacramento Mayor and City Council.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Alex Stu and I am a youth intern at Mong Youth. Good evening. My name is Alex Stu and I am a youth intern at Mong Youth and Parents United Youth Pop-Up Program. I'm calling to support pop-up program, item number five. Youth and community pop-ups are important for young people during COVID because we get to be included within the community as well as establish and build teamwork skills. In the youth pop-up program, we have gone over mental wellness in addition to self-care and the importance of it. You can also obtain working experience and leadership skills by working with the community and helping out with events for the community as well. Youth pop-up and community programs will be important for youth, people and the community during the recovery after COVID because as the COVID-19 pandemic has left the community with quarantine, the youth pop-up and program will keep the youth occupied along with educating the youth with mental wellness. As a youth intern, this pop-up has impacted my life and gave me a new experience of meeting new people and befriending them. Ever since school started in August, I have just been doing homework or studying, whether it be keeping up with my classes or staying on top of them. And the youth pop-up program gave me an opportunity to experience something new to do. Not only something other than doing homework or studying, but it was my involvement with the community and that gave me excitement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Me.
You have two minutes to, go ahead.
Go on the leadership team.
You have two minutes to address the council. Will you start now?
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, we can. Please turn down the audio on the device that you're watching the meeting. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi.
You're our final caller tonight. Please start when you're ready.
Yes, I'm the final call.
Go ahead and start. You're in the council meeting now.
All right, so the city, the city of Sacramento has helped improve the tomorrow, they improved your tomorrow I Y T during this time of pandemic and students and staff have connected through virtual hangouts. Many students wish for this to continue. I'm a student and I told them so, and virtual hangouts really put smiles on our faces and we're really thankful for this. We wish for this to continue and we just, we thank you, we just thank city of Sacramento for all this opportunity that we have. I think that's it.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more callers.
All right, thank you. Uh, thank you, members of the public. Thank you especially to all the young people who called in. Really important to hear from you. Let us call a roll on the consent calendar. Again, item nine has been pulled.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe? And councilmembers, please, thank you. Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
I think your, I think your screen is frozen.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Steinberg?
So, Councilmember Vang voted yes, I think, right?
Correct.
I did.
Okay, very good. That's all right. You know, we, we bear with all, we bear up with all the technology stuff and we'll go slow and make sure that every, every vote is counted, okay? Um, and Daryl Steinberg, Mayor Stein, I'm an aye. Okay, so that passes nine to nothing. There we go. Uh, we do have, uh, two public hearings. I'm not sure if they are controversial or not, but who is preventing on item fifteen?
Hello, Mayor Steinberg, thank you. Uh, members of the city council, my name is Sean De Corsi. I'm an associate preservation planner with the Community Development Department. I'm pleased to present item fifteen, which is a landmark nomination for the Leinberger residents at fourteen twenty-five, fourteen twenty-seven G Street. This property is a nineteen-ten triplex associated with Charlie Leinberger, an important individual who played a prominent role in the development of train brake technology at the Southern Pacific Railroad Machine Shops. The building is also an excellent and highly intact blend of colonial revival and craftsman architectural styles. The owners of the property have commissioned a historic evaluation attached to your staff report and support the nomination. Preservation Commission reviewed a draft ordinance on November eighteenth and recommended the city council pass an ordinance listing the property on the Sacramento Register as a landmark. The owners asked me to note the building has three original front doors, not two, as described in your staff report. That concludes my presentation and I'm available to answer any questions you may have at this time. And welcome to the new council members.
Maybe you could just explain what does it mean to place this, uh, property, this home on the register? What does that mean in, in real terms?
Sure. So, we maintain the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. We list properties on the register, which include historic landmarks and historic districts. Um, to list a property on the register, this property happens to already be a contributing resource to the old Washington School Historic District. The owner wanted to elevate the status as a local landmark. So, that will require that if a project that would affect the property, so changes to the exterior mostly, would go through a process in the planning department, what we call site plan and design review. And preservation staff would look at this building and evaluate to make sure that the changes to the building would not affect its historic significance.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Uh, is there public testimony on the item?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay, are there council questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by Councilmember Gueda. Is there a second?
Councilmember, can we open and close the public hearing, please?
I'll move, open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Councilmember Jennings will second the motion.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. So far, complete unanimity. It's good. Okay, um, item sixteen.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. Uh, my name is Seeny Macassini with the Department of Finance. Uh, the item before you is the modification of the current North Franklin Property and Business Improvement District Management District Plan. Uh, recently on October twenty-seventh, city council formally approved a renewal of the Franklin P-Bid, which will begin its services on January two thousand twenty-two. In order to avoid an overlap in district terms, it is proposed that we modify the current North Franklin P-Bid Management Plan, terminating one year early, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. In order to accommodate the renewed district timeline, uh, this is the reason for coming back, uh, as a public hearing to council. If you guys have any questions, uh, let me know. Thank you.
All right, are there, uh, any public comments on the item?
There are no callers on this item.
Any questions?
No, but I will, uh, open and close the public hearing and move the item.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All right, um, let us, uh, call the roll then, please.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gueda?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right, that concludes, uh, the agendized items. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
I have three callers.
Let's hear from the public.
Thank you. First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yolanda, ¿cómo empezar? Okay. Hola, me llamo Yolanda Flores. Yo soy miembro de ACE. Yo vivo en Sacramento. Tengo dos años viviendo aquí, en la Huelva Street. Yo trabajo en un daycare, pero por la pandemia he sido suspendida. Y apliqué para el programa CERA en octubre y todavía no, no he oído nada de mi aplicación. Va a ser que el dos mil veintiuno y no sé cómo pagar mi venta. Por favor, hagan algo para ayudar a la gente como yo que no puede pagar la pandemia. No puede pagar la venta, ah, perdón, ah, y y apenas unos días también me enfermé y pues ya tengo un bill de, de mi, de mi, del hospital y no sé también cómo pagarlo. Necesito que me ayuden.
Gracias. I'd like to see if, uh,
For translation purposes, um, hi, my name is Yolanda Flores. Um, I live in the city of Sacramento. I have lived here for two years. I, um, am a renter and I have, um, I, I work in a daycare and I, um, my job has been suspended due to the pandemic and I have lost my income. I have applied for the CERA program here in, um, Sacramento and I, it has been almost two months and I have not heard anything on the status of my application. I am not able to play, to pay my rent. I'm not sure how long I'm going to be able to not pay my rent. I have, um, recently, um, become sick and this money would be very useful for me. Can you please help us with this?
Can we please help this, help this constituent? Uh, Councilmember Gueda, do you want to respond and, do you want to respond? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Muchas gracias por llamando hoy. El Consilio acaba de aprobar ahorita, este, una, um, un fondos para ayudar con la renta y asistencia de la renta. Este, vamos a pedir aquí a la oficina de SHRA y también, uh, le voy a pedir a mi oficina también que les ayude también ustedes a comunicarse, pero vamos a estar seguro de ganar esa información. Le voy a pedir también a nuestra, este, gerente aquí del Consilio, Mindy Capi, si podemos comunicar con ellos también. So, I'm going to ask if our city clerk, Mindy Capi, could follow back up and with connecting SHRA and our city staff translate as well, um, to make sure that they, uh, are access, avail, uh, eligible for the rental system we just approved tonight.
Mayor, I, I don't know if the caller's still on the line, but Yolanda, I think I heard it was the translators. Can you, can you tell us what district you're in or where in the city you're at?
The caller hung up, but we can get their phone number and call them back.
Mindy, if you could call back and figure out which district it is and maybe let one, whichever one of us it is, know so we could follow up, please.
Also, Mindy, if you could back me, um, send me that information as soon as possible. We're reaching out now to people who have contacted us about the CERA program and I thought or heard that she had actually applied. So, as soon as we can get the information, we will call her back and we will have, uh, someone there to translate.
Good. Thank you.
You'll have that information this evening.
Thank you very much. We're, we're going to do everything we can to help you. Okay, let's move to next caller, please.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, mayor and city council. This is Mike Barnbaum and I live in District Two. Uh, first I want to say maazel tov, which is Hebrew, uh, for congratulations to, uh, council members Sean Laloe, uh, Katie Valenzuela, Eric Gueda, uh, Mai Vang, and Mayor Steinberg on your swearing-in ceremonies this evening.
Thank you, Mike. Did, did Mr. Barnbaum get cut off there accidentally? Okay. Um, why don't we?
Mayor, I know Mike got cut off, but I also know he was calling in because he's a big, big fan of Katie Valenzuela and Mai Vang and he's super excited they're both here. And he's been telling me for weeks that he can't wait for both of them to be sworn in. And he was so sad that this wasn't in the chambers because he really, really wanted to be there. And I'm pretty sure that's a summary of what his statement would have been. Congratulations to council member Valenzuela.
Wait and see, just how great it will be in a year, just a year from today. Uh, thank you again and, uh, happy holidays and look forward to next year.
Very good. Thank you so much, Mike, for calling in. Next? Anybody on the line?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Crystal Sanchez and I'm with the Sacramento Homeless Union. And first of all, congratulations to our new officials. It's great that we have new folks on board. Um, but I'm here actually to let this council know how disgusted I am with what is going on in this city. Um, we have had hundreds of people swept in the last week, um, unhoused people, and they're being swept with no resources. Now, it is your job as officials to curb this contagion at all costs. It is not curbing this contagion by sending people all over creation. Um, we today had a private property that was taken, um, everybody was taken off of. The police were wearing no masks. They had security wearing no masks. We had a meeting with Eric Garrett, Jay Shenier, and, um, some of the mayor's staff, and no resources were given to these folks. The only thing that happened was four days ago, the police came out and offered Meadowview Shelter. They can't go to Meadowview Shelter now because we have COVID-19 positive in there. There is no place for these folks to go. I am begging the city to put these people in hotels. They are dealing with COVID, the flu, botulism, no shelter, and it's becoming a violent situation with business owners as well. Um, I'd appreciate some contact and for you guys to get on this.
So, can we, can we get a status report, please, on what's happening, Mr. City Manager, on the Stockton Boulevard situation?
Absolutely.
Maybe, maybe during your manager's report, if, if you want, uh, here or, or do you want to come back with something in writing?
I could send something out to the council in writing.
Okay.
We'll have the latest and greatest.
Okay. Any other, any other? Madam Clerk?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, I, I barely can hear you, but I hope you can hear me. My name is Lambert Davis Jr. and I'm the founder and CEO of To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes based in District Two, specifically Del Paso Heights. Uh, I'm congratulating all of the members that were either elected or re-sworn in, two of which I've dealt with, Mayor Steinberg and also city councilman Gueda. They've been very kind to my family, but we still are focused on getting our family cheesecake business funded. Um, you're going to hear a lot from me until we do get funded, uh, because a person who was just elected into District Two, uh, you have been elected into one of the most, I would say, gerrymandered and segregated districts probably in California. So, you don't want to spend too much time with, I heard some names mentioned in those names or in a certain district, part of the district that have always received funding. My family has been in Sacramento since nineteen forty-six. They've been in Del Paso Heights since Del Pas, nineteen forty-six, and we love Del Paso Heights. We love Sacramento too. And by the way, cheesecakes of, appeals to most races and both sexes. So, it's a perfect way to do business with us and I would suggest you look and, uh, try to contact us. Our number is nine one six three seven zero nine two one one and To The Bay and Back Cheesecakes can be Googled. Uh, if you have any questions or concerns, reach out to us. Uh, but Mayor Steinberg, I'm glad you were reelected because I need your help to get us funded. We're having tremendous difficulty at the city manager's office on getting anything. And the time is up almost. Thank you to, to, uh,
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Mr. Davis, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, um,
Welcome to the, we have one more caller, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robert Copeland. I live in District Four. I'd like to congratulate my, uh, new city council member Katie Valenzuela and Sean Lally in District Two and, uh, Mai being in District Eight. Uh, I've got a few questions. How come last week I got cut off right before I was going to make a public comment? I'm not, not on Right before I was going to make a public comment, I'm not on the agenda. Two, uh, to the mayor, uh, you came up with that comprehensive plan to help homeless population. Why didn't you do that four years ago when you first got elected? Three, uh, I would suggest all the tenants that have trouble paying the rent, uh, study AB fifteen by, uh, ceiling number two. Because if that bill does not pass by the end of January, we're gonna have a whole lot more homeless people in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We have no more callers.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there council ideas and questions? Uh, again, the time for members to put out anything for the good of the order. Um, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the warm welcome tonight. Um, thank you also for your announcement earlier about the warming center. I'm really glad that we're figuring that out and hope that we can keep working on that, um, with the county, with other partners because it's very dire out there, as Ms. Straight mentioned. And I think the warming centers, whether it's hotels or there's something else, are really important. So thank you for your work on that and thank you, City Manager, for doing that work as well. Um, it won't surprise anybody as a tenant on the council that I'd love to agendize in January an update on the tenant protection program and implementation. Um, as was mentioned, we're staring at a potential eviction tsunami. Folks are being evicted right now. So I would appreciate an update on that and how it's going. And I'd also love to give time on the agenda, if we can, to the tenants' rights advocates, um, because they've gotten a lot of data from the field as to what's going on. And I think that could be important outside of public comment for them to, to present. And then finally, I, um, and this is last minute, um, that I watched several videos, um, from last weekend, several videos from the last several weekends, um, that really bother me, um, showing behaviors of the Sacramento Police Department towards counter protesters, towards the press, um, that, um, would be pretty unacceptable if, if those videos turn out to be accurate. So I would love to agendize at our January fifth meeting, if possible, if SAC PD to come in to report on their plan for managing future events that are organized by white supremacist groups in Sacramento. And also, um, including a report on the activities that have been conducted over the last several weekends since the election, when those groups started coming downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members? All right, um, City Manager, anything?
I do. I have a, a quick announcement here. I just want to take a minute and thank you for allowing me to do so. Uh, to thank our IT staff for all the work they've done to help us be successful this year. Uh, they have just absolutely been, uh, proactive and, and responsible for helping transition a large portion of our workforce to telework as a result of this pandemic. Uh, they've, uh, helped us create, uh, data tracking systems and programming for the city's CARES Act funding efforts and provided really all the technical assistance and support to get us online for public meetings like this. And to Maria McGonigal, our Director of IT, uh, Chief Information Officer, thank you for your outstanding leadership. And please thank your team for the tremendous commitment and dedication that took to support us through all the chaos of two thousand twenty. We literally would not be here right now without the support of our stellar IT team. So I just want to say we appreciate you all very much and thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Including setting up all of the technology for, uh, the thousands of city employees, including us working from home, um, it was a monumental task. Um, and I add my thank you. Maria, to you and your team. All right, members, if there's nothing else to come before our city council, we will reconvene in earnest, uh, on the fifth of January with a very, very busy agenda. Look forward to touching bases with as many of you as possible over, over the break. Um, but to everyone, including the city staff, our community, uh, and everyone, a blessed holiday, a safe holiday. Um, we got a lot of, a lot of suffering out there and a lot of blessings to count as well. And, uh, proud to, proud to work with all of you and to, uh, be part of moving Sacramento forward. A great night tonight. Congratulations again to all of the members. We really welcome you with all of our hearts and, uh, know you're going to do a great, great job. We are adjourned.